Today, we're here for the announcement of the 2029 College Football Playoff National Championship Game.
To have the College Football Playoff National Championship coming back to Hillsborough County for the first time since 2017. It's going to take place in 2029 right here at Raymond James Stadium. But when you look at all the marquee events around the country, this is one of the biggest. So to have it coming right here to our hometown is amazing.
Well, for starters, our community is so incredibly welcoming. It's truly Team Tampa Bay. That's the term we like to use. It's not a cute slogan. It's one that we take seriously. Today was a prime example of that, where all of our partners come together. We're at the table saying, how can we work together? What can we do to make this event experience the very best it can possibly be? And we certainly look forward to doing that here with our second College Football Playoff National Championship Game.
Welcome to a meeting of your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving, prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Welcome to the November 10th, 2025 regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. For those attending in person and wishing to speak on any agenda item, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. To minimize feedback in the audio, all online participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning commissioners should unmute themselves to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for the local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. For action items, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chair. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal response. Planning commissioners will ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second and discussion, a vote will be taken. With that introduction, I'd like to ask you all join me in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Would all please rise? Love justice, you who judge the earth. Think of the Lord in goodness and seek Him in integrity of heart, because He is found by those who test Him not, and He manifests Himself in those who do not disbelieve Him. Amen. Luke, pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. With that, I'd like to ask the clerk to please go ahead and call Roe.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Bowden?
Here.
Cardenas? Kona? Jamison? Kuss? Kugler?
Here.
Linkus? Lauk?
Here.
Seben? Barry?
Here.
Orton?
Here.
Joseph?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. All right. The next item is the approval of the minutes for the following meetings. Hillsborough County Planning Commission regular meeting minutes, September 8th, 2025. Hillsborough County Planning Commission Public Hearing on City of Plant City Plan Amendments Meeting Minutes, September 8th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the aforementioned minutes.
All right. All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lauk, a second to that motion by Commissioner Bowden. Any questions from the commissioners before we take our vote? Would all signify their agreement by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. All right. Our next item of business is election of officers. Item number two, the presentation of the plaque to Commissioner, former Commissioner Buzza, has been canceled because Commissioner Buzza couldn't make it here. So we have given the plaque to Commissioner Jamison to make sure it gets over to him. And we thank Commissioner Buzza for his service. Hopefully, we'll see him again soon. And we will move on to item number three on our agenda, the election of officers. I guess that will be done by myself with the aid of Tracy Robin if necessary. All right, so everybody has, I'm assuming, signed up for everything they've wanted to sign up for. Those who are here, those who are not, can't speak for themselves. So we will start, I presume, with the chair's position. And I will open the floor up to nominations from the commissioners. Right now, I'm the only person listed for chair. Are there any nominations from the floor of anyone? Not seeing any, then I guess I am the chairman again. So thank you all. I want to thank you all. I think this is going to be my seventh time consecutively serving as chair. So the vote of confidence you all have placed in me and your past colleagues is really an honor. And I just want to thank you all. I also want to say I am not going to be here forever. So at some point, right, Commissioner Lauk, who has just been reappointed, Commissioner Jamison also has just been appointed, somebody's going to have to take over. So you all are going to have to be thinking towards that coming here pretty soon in the future. Commissioner Lauk?
I will say the ease with which you are reelected illustrates your balanced approach and the great things that you do for this body. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Seben?
My second.
All right. All right. So next up, we have the vice chair position. And because I am no longer there, the only individual we have listed is Commissioner Lauk. Are there any nominations from the floor? I'll open it up to the commissioners for vice chair. Not seeing any. So congratulations, Commissioner Lauk. You continue to be our vice chair. Good job. All right. Next up, we have our member-at-large. And we have several individuals who signed up for, I guess, no, we have two because Commissioner Lauk has gone from that now. We have Commissioner Kugler and Commissioner Seben who have signed up for member-at-large. Commissioner Seben, I'm proud of you. You put yourself back in. I had to nominate you last time. All right. I will open it up to motions from the commissioners for any nominations, or sorry, nominations, not motions, from the commissioners for member-at-large position. Not seeing a lot of excitement. Then we're going to be taking a vote on this one. So hopefully, everybody has their forms. All right. So go ahead and fill out your forms, and we'll have Tracy collect them.
Please put your name at the bottom of them, please. I have the votes of commissioners for, I'm sorry, for Commissioner Seben. I have votes in favor from Commissioners Bowden, Jamison, Lauk, Joseph, and Seben. And I have for Commissioner Kugler, his vote. For Commissioner Seben as well, excuse me.
So it was unanimous?
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought I read that differently at first. It was unanimous.
Okay. All right. Well, congratulations, Commissioner Seben. All right. And that is the end of our executive officers. So we will go over to our voted committees. And first, we will start with TPO member. We have Commissioner Jamison and myself. And I will open it up to nominations from the commissioners for any others. Not seeing any. Then we'll go on ahead and vote on this one. So don't forget to put your name at the bottom, or Tracy will get you.
I have for Commissioner Joseph, the following commissioners voting in favor. Bowden, Seben, Joseph, Kugler, and Lauk. And for Commissioner Jamison, I have Commissioner Jamison. So congratulations, Mr. Joseph.
I don't know if that's congratulations, but I'll definitely do it. So TPO is a bear, and I think we're going to be changing our meeting this year. I think Director Wong was talking about having the meetings on Mondays, the second Monday, yeah. So I'm hoping that doesn't happen because then that would mean I'll be spending entire Mondays here, like I did today. But we'll see. We'll see. Yeah, we'll see. See how it goes. All right. Next up, we have our TPO alternate. And the only individual we have listed is Commissioner Bowden. So at this point, I'll open it up to nominations from the commissioners for anyone else. Who else wants to nominate? Not seeing any interest. Then congratulations, Commissioner Bowden. You are our TPO alternate again. And if I can't hack it, then you're going to become the TPO representative. We'll see how it goes. Keep that Monday free. That's right, Commissioner Kugler. All right. What next? Do we have a couple other positions too?
The other positions are ones that you appoint.
I got a point. All right.
Yes, so not voted on.
What are they?
The committees.
The committees. All right.
And the river board.
So the PIC Committee, Public Information Committee, we have Commissioner Bowden signed up for it. And I'll put it out there to see if anybody had any interest in being on the Public Information Committee. Nobody seems too excited about it. So Commissioner Bowden will be our representative there. I have myself listed for the Agency Budget Committee. Anybody else interested in coming along for fun on the Budget Committee? It's a good time. You all, come on. No?
Mr. Chair, what does that mean?
The Budget Committee, aye.
It is based on the schedule of the Budget Committee members. And then all Planning Commission members are invited to any of the committee meetings. But we'll work on the scheduling based on the members of the committee. It's usually...
And is it typically in person?
It's usually remote unless we have it on the regular Planning Commission meeting day, like before the meeting or in between the meetings.
I'll volunteer.
Budget? All right. Good deal. All right. So that's me and Commissioner Lauk. And next up, we have our River TAC, and we have Commissioner Kugler, who's volunteered to do that for us. And anyone else interested in being on that? Again, you can all attend. It isn't limited. We just need to have someone set to run the meeting. So that's why we kind of have one person put their name up. Thank you, Commissioner Kugler, because I would have made you do it if you had not put yourself in there anyway. I know you're interested in those things, and you sort of live, you're Tampa representative, so you're kind of a good fit for that. So yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. And next up, we have our Hillsborough County Affordable Housing, no, that's, they serve three-year terms, so they're already in there. All right. So that stays the same. Commissioner Bowden is the Hillsborough County Affordable Housing Advisory Board rep. And City of Tampa Affordable Housing Advisory Committee is Commissioner Seben and Cardenas. Get to figure it out between themselves who's going. Okay.
Yeah.
You just throwing people under the bus is how we do it today? All right.
I think the City of Tampa had both Planning Commissioners, Seben and Cardenas, listed as members of the committee. So that's why I listed them that way. So we may need to clean that up.
He had, like, assigned it to me about a year or so ago.
Okay.
Got it.
That sounds like Giovanni. We should have nominated him chair while he wasn't here. Come back to a surprise. All right. So that is it for our voting and for our committees. So we will move on now to our actual business. Let's see, public input. We didn't have anyone sign up for public input for items not on the agenda. So now we will move on to our action items. And the first is the appointment of the TPO Citizens Advisory Committee Representative. And the presenter is Melissa Sornita.
We have two people who have applied for the position on the TPO Citizen Advisory Committee. As a TPO voting member, you all are given the ability to appoint somebody to their Citizens Advisory Committee. These folks serve a two-year term, but we have one position to appoint for. So we have two individuals, Bill Myers and Will Atkins, who've been invited to attend the meeting and give a three-minute presentation and provide additional information from what was in their application.
All right. Did Mr. Atkins and Mr. Myers want to come forward with a coin on who wants to go first?
Afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the invitation. I'm Dr. William Myers. I'm an Associate Professor of Political Science at the University of Tampa. I've lived in the community since 2012 and all around the community. South Tampa, out in the Riverview area, and then now back into Tampa Heights. One of the things that we pride ourselves at the University of Tampa is being engaged with our community and helping to share our expertise to help make the place that we live a little bit better. And ultimately, that's why I'm interested in this appointment. I think my specific expertise in municipal governance and about how localities make important policy decisions, and ultimately, being able to explain that to an audience and a group of people who might be frustrated or might not understand exactly why things are happening the way that they are. But maybe I can make it a little bit easier for them to understand. And hopefully, that is also part of a two-way conversation, where I can help to take what people's thoughts are, what their frustrations are, and be able to report it back as well. Because I think that's ultimately something that is missing and vital, right? It's a two-way conversation that needs to happen. And whoever ends up being in this position, I hope will take that to heart and take that seriously. I would just say the last thing that I just would like to draw attention to is that I think we all know how important the Planning Commission is for the economic development of not only the city and the county, but surrounding area. We know how important the economy is, and we know how important, really a vital part of keeping everything going is. And we know that people are moving here and people are staying here because they're finding success personally, professionally, financially. But a big part of that is the quality of life and making sure that this is a place that people want to be able to stay and spend their time. And I think that's one of the things that we really need to focus on. The consequences of what these decisions are, not just in terms of what this means for people's businesses and employment prospects, but what this means for people really wanting to be here and spend their lives here. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Mr. Atkins?
Good afternoon. That was Bill. I'm Will Atkins. I recently retired from the military after 22 years of service. My expertise was operations and transportation planning. And now that I'm retired, I've got a lot of time on my hands. And I'm looking to use the background and the experience that I got in the military with transportation planning to continue to serve the public. While the Planning Commission kind of comes up with the land use vision, and the TPO does the allocation priorities, it's our job as the CAC to translate those decisions into how it's going to affect the people in their day-to-day lives. I currently sit on the board of the North Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce. So I interact daily with commuters and business owners, families that all interact with the transit system in different ways. And I'd like to be able to bring back that feedback into the process. And I think that's the first priority of the CAC, is to disseminate the information and then consolidate the feedback and bring it back. The second priority, though, for me, would be consistency between what this body decides, how that gets translated down to TPO. Monday morning quarterbacking doesn't do anybody any good, especially if those people never provided feedback to the decision-making to begin with. So making sure that not only they have, that people have that opportunity, but then, once the decision is made, we move forward in the best way possible to implement those plans for the community. And last, I guess I would say, safety and resilience. Obviously, you know, Friday's horrific crash in Ebor. A couple of weeks ago, three kids got hit crossing 56th. You know, right now, the community is hurting. There's a lot of discussions about pedestrian safety and keeping people safe. But that plays into, you know, Vision Zero. And people don't realize some of the programs that are already there to accomplish the goals that they're looking for. So I've been kind of involved in this space for a little while. The Public Participation Plan, which the CAC should play a big role in. You know, these are kind of the things that I've been occupying my time with since being retired. So I thank you for your time. Thank you for what you all are doing. And I would be honored to join you in that mission. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We didn't have anyone sign up for comments on this one. So I'll turn it over to commissioners for questions and discussions. I believe on this one, we have to make a motion and take action on the motion because it's only two of them, right? If it was three or more, we'd be voting. But since it's just two of them, we're just going to pick. And if the motion carries, then that individual...
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'll open it up to questions, comments from the Planning Commissioners. Does anybody have any? Yes, Commissioner Kugler?
Thank you. I just had a question. Is this a question for one of the individuals?
Yeah, whichever one. Yeah, you can, yeah.
Excellent. For the candidate Myers, I was interested in what your process was for creating a channel or having channels for community input.
Yeah, I think there's just an awful lot of channels that are available just in general right now for communication, right? So beyond the typical kind of social media and public meetings and things like that. I think part of the thing that someone in this position needs to do is to really just spend more time outside of those official channels and actually going to meet people where they're at, spending time in the communities. If there are community meetings or community groups, I think someone in this position should actually go and be in those meetings, rather than just trying to kind of like hold their own specific meeting and inviting those people there. I think we need to be more proactive in getting more enmeshed in the community than continue just to invite the community to show up and hope that people arrive.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I did have a question for both gentlemen. I just want to make sure you all understand what you're getting into here. Have you ever watched the CAC meetings or have any direct? Those meetings I hear can go pretty long and go pretty late sometimes. So it's pretty involved being a member of the CAC. I just want to make sure you gentlemen are aware of what you're signing up for here. Both of you, yeah. Both of you going to...
Yeah, I think part of the reason why they go as late as they do, sometimes, it's important that we show up informed on what the issues are, and we're not trying to educate on the spot. You know, in the military, we call that just-in-time training. We need to kind of eliminate some of that. But, you know, I was at this meeting last month. These are the topics that we're talking about are too complex to just kind of walk in blind. And yeah, it takes a lot of homework, and the more people show up ready to take action, then the shorter those meetings can be.
I mean, I would expect these meetings to take a long time. I mean, these are complicated issues, and people care deeply. And they're worried about what the effect of all these decisions are going to be on their communities. And so however long those conversations need to take to help people feel comfortable and get educated on what's happening, I think is kind of what the remit of the job is.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Lauk, I see you moving.
I'd like to say thank you to both of you for signing up for this and volunteering. I wish that we could appoint both of you, reading the documentation that we got in advance for impressive resumes and impressive folks. So thank you for volunteering to serve your community.
All right. Good comments. Comments, Commissioner Lauk. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Not seeing a lot of excitement, all right. Then I'll go on ahead and close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Still not seeing a lot of excitement. Give you, you all, Commissioner Bowden.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we appoint candidate Will Atkins.
Okay.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to appoint Mr. Atkins. We have a second to that motion by Commissioner Kugler. Are there any questions, discussions from the Planning Commissioners before we take our vote? And just to be clear again, we're voting to approve or not approve Mr. Atkins' appointment. So not seeing any movement. Then would all signify their agreement by saying aye. Aye, those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Atkins. And thank you again, Mr. Myers. Again, it would be great to be able to send both of you, but we got to do what we got to do. But thanks a lot for your time. All right. And we will move on to our next agenda item. Our next action item is 5B. Port Tampa Bay Standard Work Permit Application 25-016 West Riverwalk Pedestrian Underpass Bridges and Overlook. And the presenter is Diego Guerra.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Diego Guerra, Planning Commission Staff. Again, this item is Port Tampa Bay Standard Work Permit 2516 West Riverwalk Pedestrian Underpasses and Bridges and Overlook. The port permit was reviewed in accordance with Chapters 95, 488, and 97, 351 of Laws of Florida. The project is located along the Hillsborough River Corridor in downtown Tampa. A little bit of orientation to the image on the slide. North is to the left. The conference center is to the top right. And then Bay Shore Boulevard is along the lower portion of the image. The, not really highlighted in red, but outlined in red along the shoreline. To the left is the underpass that would go under Brolrine Street. In the middle would be the overlooked boardwalk. And then to the far right would be the underpass that would take pedestrians under the Channel Side/Platte Street Bridge. These bridges are, well, this portion of the shoreline is currently interrupted by those two bridges. And these underpasses would link pedestrian, the pedestrian cross, pedestrian walkways. Excuse me. The existing conditions. The current conditions on the slide are, consist, are unconsolidated sandy bottom. They are void of seagrasses, submerged aquatic vegetation, or other protected marine resources at the three sites, mostly due to the fact that there's a seawall along that entire portion of the Hillsborough River. The project, the project is part of the West Riverwalk Expansion and provides underpass bridges connecting the Riverwalk with, while also providing an overlook boardwalk as depicted on the right side of the images. The top is the Platte Street Channel Side Bridge and Janus Park. And then the bottom is the, that overlook boardwalk. The proposed work connects the interrupted portions of the Riverwalk while avoiding high-traffic intersections. The Platte Street Pedestrian Underpass is expected to consist of approximately a little over 7,000 square feet, while the Brolrine Street Underpass is expected to consist of a little over 5,000 square feet. Port Tampa Bay Standard Work Permit 2516 is consistent with land use policies that encourage engaging the Riverwalk and improving connections to and from it. Policies that discuss creating a vibrant public, vibrant public places and improving pedestrian experience in the downtown in addition to improving connections to the city's greenways and river corridor. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes my presentation. Planning Commission staff recommends that Port Tampa Bay Standard Work Permit Number 2516 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you. We didn't have anyone from the port or anyone to make any other presentations? Diego?
No.
No, okay. All right. And then I will, let me just make sure. Nope, we had no one sign up for the public comment for this one, so I'll turn it over to the commissioners for questions, comments, or discussions. Not seeing a lot of motion. Then I will, going once, going twice, close the public comment on this item and open it up to the commissioners for motions. Commissioner Lauk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move we find the proposed Port Tampa Bay Standard Work Permit Application Number 25-016 consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
All right. Is there a second? All right. We have a motion of consistency finding or approval by Commissioner Lauk. And a second to that by Commissioner Jemison. Are there any questions, comments from the commissioners before we take our vote? Not seeing any. Then would all signify their agreement by saying aye. Aye, those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Good job, Mr. Guerra.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Item 5C, Ebor Parking Requirements, Land Development Code Text Amendments. And the presenter is Emily Phelan.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission Staff. I will let the City of Tampa do their presentation first. Dana Collier Crosby is here for that. And then after she gives her presentation, I will come back and give staff's finding on this.
Hi. Good afternoon. Dana Crosby Collier from the City Attorney's Office. I'm here today on Item 5C, Land Development Code Text Amendment Regarding Ebor Parking Requirements. This amendment is necessary due to recent changes in state law that we discussed when I was here with our July cycle. As you know, every year we do two cycles of publicly-initiated amendments to the land development regs. Our January 2024 cycle, however, ended up being bifurcated. On July 18th, 2024, most of the January 2024 amendments did pass council. However, the Ebor City parking requirements were pulled out of that bill, that ordinance, and they were heard separately on September 5th, 2024, at which time City Council adopted the amendments. Those amendments primarily were to enhance parking standards and security for parking lots in Ebor City. And it took effect, it was approved on September 5th, which is really important to this discussion, and it took effect on October 15th, 2024. So we start moving forward. Uh-oh. See if I can do it that way. I don't know what I did. Thank you. Okay. So our ordinance took effect October 15th, 2024, while legislative session started in March of 2025. As you know, it was a very active legislative session, very long, in fact. On May 2nd, the House and Senate both passed Senate Bill 180, which we talked about when I was here about our July cycle, and how that provides that we, as a city, can enact no more restrictive or burdensome LDR or comp plan amendment retroactive to August 1. So the governor signed it into law. As of July 2025, we were no longer enforcing the Ebor parking ordinance because we had heard outcry from the community, this is more restrictive and more burdensome. And in fact, in August, we received a letter in opposition to the Ebor parking ordinance stating it was more restrictive and burdensome. So on September 25th, we brought our July 2025 cycle to council and an update on our July 2024 cycle. And at that time, I also briefed them on the Ebor parking regulations and the concerns we had heard from the community. So on October 23rd, council approved a resolution transmitting the Ebor parking amendments to the Planning Commission for your review and for your finding of consistency with the comp plan. And just to let you know what we're doing right now and what's in the packet before you. The draft ordinance you see today restores what was in effect on August 1, 2024. We have restored the requirement that parking lots are staffed by staff, but we've removed the requirement that each lot have a security guard. We've removed the requirement that principal-use parking lot operators submit an annuals plan, operation plan, and security plan to the city every year. And we have reverted the certificate of appropriateness approvals back to the BLC administrator. The new ordinance had, would have the BLC do those approvals. But until Senate Bill 180 is resolved, if ever, they would revert back to the BLC administrator. And we also have changed the landscape and buffer requirements to those that were previously required on August 1, 2024. And I'm here for any questions, if you have any.
Planning Commission staff did recommend that this proposed LDC text amendment related to the Ebor parking requirements be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. This amendment would streamline the development review process, and it would also provide buffering and screening standards and the overall aesthetics to ensure parking lots do not negatively affect the neighborhood. That's the end of our presentation, if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. All right. We didn't have anyone sign up for the public comment on this one, so I will turn it over to commissioners for questions, comments. Commissioner Lauk, is that a question or just a left-on-line?
That would be a left-on-line.
Okay. Are there any comments, questions from the commissioners? Not seeing any. Then I will go on ahead and close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this item. Anyone? Commissioner Lauk.
We don't want a motion from me. I move we find the proposed LDC text amendment relating to Ebor City parking requirements consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan and forward the recommendation to Tampa City Council.
All right. Motion of consistency finding. Is there a second out there?
I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Lauk. Second to that motion by Commissioner Bowden. Any questions or clarifications from the commissioners before we take our vote? And would all signify their agreement by saying aye. Aye, those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Item 5D, Unincorporated Hillsborough County Land Development Code Text Amendment 25-1435, Pickleball Courts Distance Separation Requirements from Residential Uses. And the presenter is Tyreek Royal.
Hello, everyone. Tyreek Royal, Planning Commission Staff. And I'll present Israel Monsanto, who'll give a brief overview of this advocacy amendment.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Israel Monsanto Development Services. Commissioner, this item will be heard by the Board of County Commissioners on November 13th for the adoption. LDC 251435, Pickable Courts Locational Standards. This amendment will add regulations to new pickable courts in our county in order to mitigate noise impacts to nearby residential uses. The new construction of these courts or conversion of an existing use into a pickable court will be required to maintain a distance separation of no less than 250 feet from the structure or building envelope of residential uses. The review of pickable court facilities will require approval of a conditional use zoning permit in accordance with our code Part 100100. Existing pickable courts will be deemed legal nonconforming, and they will have to be certified as, during the process of a legal nonconforming use review. And this concludes my presentation.
All right. Planning Commission staff have reviewed this text amendment 251435 and found it to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive Plan, including Policy 4.1.2, which relates to the requirement that developing all established land development regulations, recreational open space objectives 1.2 and 1.4.1, which relate to the integration of recreational parts with the built environment, and that recreation program opportunities continue and grow while development occur in future land use section policy 3.1.2, which relates to the gradual transition of intensity and density. And that concludes our finding.
Thank you. All right. We didn't have anyone in the public sign up for comment on this one either, so I will turn it over to commissioners for questions, comments. Commissioner Lauk.
How many legal nonconforming uses will this create in the county?
Could you repeat the question?
I noted in the packet, and you mentioned it as well in the presentation. How many legally non, how many legal nonconforming uses will this create? So in other words, how many pickleball courts do we have out there where if they make a modification, we're going to have to come before zoning review?
Yeah, we don't have an exact number. But what this court will do is that any existing pickable court prior to the September 17th, 2025, they will be deemed illegal nonconforming use. But again, I don't, we don't have the exact number of those existing courts.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Seben.
How does this comply with Senate Bill 180?
Well, the county commissioners were made aware of it, and they made the decision to move forward, understanding the bill. So they acknowledged that. That it may be, it may be impacted, but they decided to move forward with the Land Development Code text amendment.
Okay.
All right.
How did we decide how we're going to handle that? We're just going to vote however we?
Well, we have to vote based on how we vote. I mean, then it goes to them after we vote. We're not the final say. We're making a recommendation to them, and they're going to do what they're going to do. They're the elected officials, so.
But are we voting subject to or not subject to Senate Bill 180?
That's a good point. That's a question for staff, because staff found it technically consistent. So did staff, Planning Commission staff, take Senate Bill 180 into the, into the mix? Ms. Ornita, I see she's ready to speak up.
Well, I think, you know, our charge is looking at consistency with the Comprehensive Plan, not necessarily compliance with state law. So we looked at consistency with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Certainly, I, if you all want to take into account the legislation and make that a part of your finding, I think we would just want to connect that with something in the Comprehensive Plan. And there is a policy that we cited about Policy 4.1.2, about developments meeting or exceeding the Land Development Code regulations, but also those things adopted by the state of Florida and federal government. So if you were to want to take that into account, you might use that policy.
All right. We'll go with Commissioner Bowden first.
Yeah. Of course, the 250 feet. I've got a question about the methodology and how you get the 250 feet, as well as, has anyone did a noise measurement as to how did it affect? You know. Well, basically, I guess it comes to where this number come from.
Turn your mic on. Yeah, sorry.
Thanks. The County Attorney's Office looked at other jurisdictions in the state, and others have followed the similar distance requirements. And we used that distance requirement as proposed by the county commissioners at that meeting in September. In terms of the noise levels, there is no specific study, at least as part of this court amendment that has been done. But again, it was taken by looking at and doing an analysis of other jurisdictions and how they made that court amendments in those other jurisdictions.
Okay. Well, the only reason I ask that is that if you were to build a court in a valley, 250 feet, you would get that echo every place. But I just wanted to know what the thought process in the 250 feet. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Jemison.
Are there any restrictions on basketball courts, tennis courts, other types of facilities similar to this?
Not in the code.
Interesting. And Tracy, you're backing that statement made by Ms. Ornita. It was an interesting statement. It's a right, correct statement. I'm not, it's just hearing it come out, you know, we're supposed to disregard state law and just focus on consistency with the comp plan. Seems a little.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Consistency is the charge of the commission. I think if there's a concern about that, perhaps you would accompany the transmittal if it's, if it's a finding of, well, either way, you could, you could accompany it with a letter expressing concern about compliance with. a letter expressing concern about compliance with recent changes in state law and, and recommend that county attorney's office provide them with, you know, advice on that.
Okay. Mr. Lauk?
I was going to ask the same question that I heard from my right, and just looking at it, had to pull it back up, but Hillsborough County regulates structures through its Land Development Code in Article 6 Design Standard Improvement Requirements. There are several setbacks and different things that are documented in there. I wonder why we're specifically creating new law, especially under the auspices of Florida state law, when there's several things outlined in terms of commercial setback, industrial setback. It seems we may have this covered already under existing code.
Under 611, those are conditional uses and special uses. Yes, we do have some regulations for setbacks. It all depends on, on the uses, and that's why this proposed text amendment is being added on that particular section under 611 as a new standard, because again, there is no specific regulation for setback for this type of facilities, and this would be one that's being added to that 611. We also have buffers and screening, but that deals with incompatible uses and, and staff felt that this was the correct place in the code to add these regulations, because there are standards and requirements similar to other setbacks for other facilities.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions, comments or discussions from the commissioners? All good questions, all really good discussion. Commissioner Kugler?
Just a suggestion that I know that pickleball has grown astronomically in recent time, and that may be part of the, the issue people have is they're more used to basketball and it's one basketball hitting, not 20, because you can put several small courts, pickleball courts and where a tennis court was before. And I have heard bicycling around, I've heard a lot more from pickleball than from tennis, from a distance, from almost any distance, even 100 feet. It could be possibly what triggered the concern.
All right. All good thoughts. Are there any other comments, questions from the commissioners, statements? Commissioner Seben, I see you moved. Nope. All right. Well, then I'm gonna go on ahead and close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Seben?
Motion to find LDC text amendment 25-1435 inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan as it relates to section 4.1.2, because I don't believe it complies with Senate Bill 180.
All right. Commissioner Jemison?
Second that motion.
All right. We have a motion of inconsistency finding, signing policy 4.1.2, and a second to that motion.
Commissioner Lauk? I would also support that motion. Could I suggest policies to add to the motion? Commissioner Seben?
Motion maker?
Yes.
All right.
I would offer policy 1.4.1 and policy 1.2.13.
What was the first?
1.4.1.
And those were from the Recreation and Open Space section or from the Future Land?
Recreation and Open Space.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for allowing me to do that.
Are you cool with that? And Commissioner Jemison being the second, are you okay with the amended motion here? All right. All right. So we have a motion of consistency finding, signing policies 4.1.2, 1.2.13, 1.4.1. Are there any questions, any more discussions from the commissioners? Commissioner Lauk?
Sorry, did you say inconsistent?
Inconsistent, it's inconsistent is what we're voting for if I said the wrong thing. Inconsistency finding, so. All right. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners before we take our vote? Would all signify their agreement by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right. We got one. We're gonna take it to a roll call.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jemison?
Yes.
Kugler?
No.
Lauk?
Yes.
Seben?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried five to one. Commissioner Kugler voted no.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, that is it for our action items. Everybody can breathe a breath of relief right there. We are on to our briefings and presentations, and the first one is 6A, Future Leaders in Planning, FLIP Alumni Survey Update, and the presenter is Bryn Dauphinay.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Bryn Dauphinay, the Community Relations Coordinator with Planning Commission staff. I am here today to talk about the Future Leaders in Planning, or our FLIP alumni program that we've been working on. As some of you may know, FLIP is a program designed to introduce urban planning to high school students in Hillsborough County. We began the program in 2016 with the goal of offering broad exposure to planning for these students after noticing that it was a topic not often taught below the graduate education level. Every summer, we invite 20 to 25 students to spend a week with us, listening to speakers, engaging in interactive planning projects and experiencing tours on foot, by bus, streetcar or boat. It's a chance for them to learn about planning professional, or I'm sorry, it's a chance for them to learn from planning professionals and other related government services fields in both the public and private sectors, as well as connect with other students with a passion for planning for the thriving futures of our communities. This program does not require any additional agency funding, which is always a good thing. All funding from the program comes from sponsorships and all of our speakers and chaperones volunteer their time. So far, we've had eight cohorts of students and are currently planning for our ninth this summer. In May of 2025, Chair Dr. Nigel Joseph requested staff to begin developing a process to follow up with the program alumni to see if FLIP had any lasting effects on students' future education or career choices. Staff developed a short survey and launched it in July 2025. We sent one email per month inviting alumni to take our survey, for a total of five so far, to a list of 125 students. On the survey, we asked questions about their current positions and future plans after their FLIP experiences. We've received 18 responses so far, which is actually up from the 14 that was originally in the packet sent to you all. Forty-four percent of respondents are currently in a planning, design or government-related work or education field, and that includes one of our very own here at the Planning Commission, Mariela Overdorf, who graduated FLIP in 2018. In a separate question, we asked the self-reported students to identify if they plan to enter one of these fields in the future, and 58% of them confirmed that they, they did plan. After their FLIP experiences, 94% felt encouraged to be involved in civic or governmental activities such as joining their neighborhood association, sitting on local committees, participating in public meetings and other similar activities. And my favorite metric is 100% of them are likely, said that they were likely to recommend FLIP to prospective students. As you can see, we have some great takeaways from the alumni. They spoke highly of the program and the work that planners put into making great communities. They said things like the program further solidified their passion for urban planning and they were introduced to new ways of thinking. They also enjoyed the structure of the program, getting out and touring places they never would have thought were important to the quality of life of our citizens. One student even said that they, that we gave them a brand new view on the world. We plan to continue to follow up with alumni, adding each year's cohort to our contact list as they graduate from the program. We plan to send up to four alumni survey reminders per year, including a question that allows students to update their contact email so that we can reach them more effectively moving forward. We're excited about what the future holds for both the program and each graduating class of students. And these are just a few photos of the eight cohorts that we've had, all of the different groups. That concludes my presentation. Thank you very much. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Lauk, is your light on again?
Man, I am off tonight.
You're just really excited about FLIP.
I had it on so I could say that was awesome.
Thank you.
All right. There any other comments? Great job, by the way.
Thank you.
I'd encourage all the Planning Commissioners, as I said earlier at the elections, I'm not gonna be here forever. Commissioner Rodriguez is one who always volunteers his time for the program, so Mr. Berry, I hope you get to know this program more and you also become engaged with it because it's really great working with these little kids and their, their eyes just light up when they get to hear about these things and put these ideas together and come up with big ideas for the community. And as you can tell by the numbers, it's something that sticks with them for a long time. We have a lot of them go on to state schools and schools around this region and go into planning as a career and other careers in the development fields, whether it be architecture or engineering or whatever they're looking at doing, you know? So it's, it's had a really big impact on the youth of this community and it's a great program. So keep an ear out. They, they email all of us at various points during the year looking for different helps or volunteering, so if you see it come across your email, something definitely get involved in. It's definitely a good program. All right. Are there any other comments, thoughts from the commissioners? We'll thank you for the information, Ms. Dauphinay.
Thank you very much.
We will move on to our next agenda item. 6B, TTCPA 2501, Capital Improvement Section Policies 1.1.1, 1.1.3, and presenter is Erica Larson.
Good afternoon. This is Erica Larson, Planning Commission staff. Today, I'll be briefing you on the proposed text amendment to the Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan, specifically addressing the Capital Improvement Section Policies 1.1.1 and 1.1.3. This is a publicly initiated amendment. The purpose of this amendment is straightforward. We're proposing to remove outdated language from two capital improvements policies. Specifically, this includes references to the 15-year multimodal transportation program and the concurrency management report. The reason for this update is that these requirements are no longer mandated by state statute. Under previous growth management laws, local governments were required to maintain a 15-year multimodal transportation district schedule and a concurrency management reporting process. The proposed amendment aligns with the city's Comprehensive Plan with current state law and ensures the Temple Terrace's Capital Improvement Section reflects only what's required for compliance. As the policies are currently written, the city is required to annually review, update and incorporate projects from the 15-year multimodal transportation program into the Capital Improvement Section. The amendment removes the requirement while retaining all necessary statutory components. However, the city may still choose to maintain a 15-year program to support long-range planning and coordination with regional partners if desired. We are continuing to coordinate with Temple Terrace staff on the final policy language, so the wording of these policies may be slightly modified when this item returns for public hearing. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
All right. Any questions, comments from the commissioners on this one? Not seeing any. We will thank you for the information and we will move on to our next agenda item. 6C, PCCPA 2506, Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, north of Trapnell Road, east of Mudlake Road, and the presenter is Krista Kelly.
Krista Kelly, Planning Commission staff. As you said, I'm presenting PCCPA 2506. This is a future land use map amendment. The site is located north of Trapnell Road and east of Mudlake Road. This is a privately initiated, small-scale amendment, approximately 23.6 acres in size. The site is currently in the unincorporated Hillsborough County, but it is pending approval of a voluntary annexation. The applicant's requesting a change from Hillsborough County Residential 1 to Plant City Residential 4. As you see on the location map, the site's located in the southern portion of Plant City. Again, it is on the north side of Trapnell Road and east of Mudlake Road. It is approximately a mile and a half west of State Road 39 and two miles north of State Road 60. Okay, this is an arrow that shows the subject site outlined in pink and the Plant City limits delineated in blue. The site is northeast of the intersection of Trapnell Road and Mudlake Road, and due to the site's L-shaped configuration, it has frontage on both roads. Currently, the site is used for agricultural purposes and the lands immediately adjacent are also reflect a development pattern that is a mix of agricultural lands and rural residential development on large lots. Conversely, within the Plant City limits to the northwest, west and southwest, the area, the area's development pattern takes on a suburban feel, which is established by the built-out Walden Lakes community. Walden Lakes is a planned residential development covering approximately 2,000 acres and is primarily developed with single-family homes on half acre to quarter, I'm sorry, quarter acre to half acre lots. As you see, the suburban scale development pattern appears to be expanding on the fringe of the Walden Lakes community. This is the adopted future land use map currently showing the site in unincorporated Hillsborough County and designated Residential 1, as are the areas to the north, directly to the west and south of the site. To the east of the site, again, it, the site abuts the city limits. The lands directly to the east of the site are currently identified as transitional areas, which means these sites have been annexed into Plant City but have not adopted a plant amendment to bring it into consistency with the Plant City future land use map. As you see, Walden Lakes to the northwest and west is designated Residential 6. However, the existing development pattern is less dense than that. Typically, like I said, a quarter acre to a half acre in size. And then the, the light tan color is Residential 4 within the city limits, an expansion of the suburban scale development pattern. This is the proposed map now showing the site designated Residential 4. And as you can see, going eastward beyond the transitional area site, within the city limits, the area is still designated agricultural and residential 4. Currently, up to 23 dwelling units can be considered and up to 257,000 square feet of non-residential use could potentially be developed. If the amendment were approved, up to 94 units could be considered and the square footage for non-residential would remain the same. In summary, the proposed amendment would allow an additional 71 dwelling units, but there would be no change in the non-residential square footage. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments from the commissioners on this one? Seeing any? Oh, Commissioner Jemison?
Do you know if there is a current application for annexation?
There is currently, it's currently pending approval. It runs concurrently with the plan amendment application.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this one? That was the time. Get it out there before it comes back to us. Not seeing any. All right. Thank you for the information. Look forward to this one coming back next go-around. And we will move on to our next agenda item, our Executive Director's Report, and the presenter is Melissa Zornita.
Good afternoon, Melissa Zornita, Executive Director. At your seat, you should have a copy of my typical Executive Director's Report. Just a couple of things to highlight from that. In October, on the 21st, I had the opportunity to attend the Hillsborough Legislative Delegation Meeting and provide an update on behalf of the TPO, because Dr. Wong was out of town, about the progress on the merger study that's been ongoing, looking at combining the Hillsborough, Pasco and Pinellas MPOs. They're having a workshop later this month with the principal decision makers. It's actually this Friday, and will, are hoping to move forward with some progress on finalizing some of the decisions related to that. As a couple of you pointed out, I did go on a tour, a couple of staff and I went on a tour with, of the south of Gandy area with some of the citizens from that part of the city. It was very interesting to see some of the more recent developments that have occurred in that area and hear their perspective of those. And then lastly, just last Friday, we had one of our quarterly coordination meetings with the Tampa Bay Builders Association. They were very interested in both the progress on the Tampa Plan Update and the Plant City Update, which we have concluded the, the survey on the visioning there. And you should see on the schedule... there. And you should see on the schedule, which we'll be talking about under new business, that we tentatively have a joint Planning Commission, Plant City Commission workshop scheduled for January 26th in the afternoon. They're, they've reserved the location and are just waiting for that to get approved by the Plant City Commission, which I think they might be discussing this evening. So in addition to those items, we have a number of comprehensive plan updates on different amendments that have gone to the county or to the city of Tampa, because there are so many of them. I'm not going to read them out loud, but if you have questions about any of them, I'd be happy to to answer them. Most of them have been moved forward. And then the last item that I wanted to address was the request that came up in the county public hearing last month related to looking at the land use pattern along a portion of 301 from the Tampa Bay Pass Canal to Fowler Avenue. And we met internally to discuss the timing of when that would make the most sense to do. And as part of that, looked at the proximity of this, those sites to the city of Temple Terrace. And they, the city of Temple Terrace has, in their plan, had for quite some time policies around having some joint planning areas, which this would be a potential candidate for that, given its proximity. So we would like to look at this corridor in conjunction with the update of the Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan later next year or in early 2027, when we're able to reengage with their staff on the idea of a joint planning area, whether that would be appropriate for this area. I should say, since this is an unincorporated county, and we did get a, an email, which I think Sharon sent out on Friday, inquiring like, well, what about the Thonona Sasa Community Plan? It is in the Thonona Sasa Community Plan, and we absolutely would look at that. Ultimately, any decisions about any changes to that area would come before the county commission, because it's in the unincorporated area. But we see some synergy to looking at that larger geography of the broader area and engaging with the community, engaging with Temple Terrace staff and county staff on these issues at the time that we're looking at those policies. So that would be what, wanted to get back to you on that. Also, just want to reiterate that the staff is regularly looking at proactive opportunities to update not only the future land use map, but the text of the plan, like what Erica presented. We're not waiting for the update of the Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan to make those policy changes in the capital improvements element. If we see them and notice them and see they need to be made now, as long as we have the capacity and resources to do it, we're moving forward with those things as as soon as possible. And we do have a number of sites that have been identified based on plan amendment and development trends or through different community studies that have been done and, or items that because of other plan amendments have kind of created isolated issues. We have one that is on the hearing this evening that Emily's bringing forward. That's, that that falls into that number three category. But just wanted you to know that we definitely are on the lookout for them and are moving them forward as as resources and time permits. And with that, I think that's all I had for my report.
All right. I see Commissioner Lauk moving already, so turn it over to you.
I'm moving. Easy for you to say. I always just stumble on this word. The Thonona Sasa Corridor on 301. What I heard was possibly early 2027, and I'll defer my colleagues up here. I'm not comfortable with that on an extended timeline, especially given last month's presentation, when we, we really look at what the long-term plan is for that area and we see the uses that are in place today and the uses that are coming in. We are wildly, I think, out of concert from with our plan with what we see coming in from the public. We see, I think it was Res 10, don't hold me, don't hold me on that, but it was residential up and down 301. We're seeing mostly businesses come in, and I think we need to get out in front of it. And I think 2027 is too far down the road. That's my feedback. I'm willing to be wrong on on some sort of old or new business, but I think it's too far out.
I don't think it's a right or wrong issue. Definitely, you know, germane. It is, it is a bit of time. So if you feel that it's a little too much, then maybe Ms. Zornita might be able to put her head together and come up with something better. I don't know. Or it might just be, it might, it might be what it is, you know. If if staff can't handle it until then, then but.
I'm fearful that tyranny of the minority, if I'm the minority on this and it's not really important, then I don't want to be the one forcing it and pushing it. But I felt really compelled to say something at the last meeting because we're so out of sync with, our plan is so out of sync with what is going on in the private sector out there.
Sure. Absolutely understand that. We have, just for context, I mean, we would, I don't want to over commit that we're going to be able to do something sooner. For example, for the October cycle of unincorporated county plan amendments, we received 15 applications. If that were to slow down and us not have that volume of work for that team, I think we might be able to move this sooner. But so far, we've not seen a downward trend in plan amendments. We're still working on the city of Tampa's plan update. We've started Plant Cities, and we have committed to Temple Terrace that we would start theirs in 2026. So I'm cognizant of not overextending the staff. If the opportunity presents itself to move it for sooner, I absolutely will. But I just don't want to promise something I can't deliver on.
All right. He's going to keep his eye on it. Commissioner Kugler?
This is kind of a beginner question, but if, would we have fewer requests for plan amendments had, if we did the changes that Mr. Lauk, Commissioner Lauk is suggesting? Would that cut down on our workload?
I think potentially, overall, the more we can start to do proactive looks at the future land use map, yes, it would reduce that. We have identified areas where we're seeing some trends in, for example, the Causeway Boulevard Corridor through Palm River. We've seen, I think, now three or four plan amendments on that corridor. So we'd like to get out there, change the land use and get it so that we don't have to keep having them individually come in. The hard part is, there's not always a clear trend about where we're going to see it. We also have a number of tools in the comprehensive plan that allow us some flexibility, particularly in the unincorporated plan. We have what's called a flex provision, where people can ask if they're within 500 feet of a land use line to flex it as part of a rezoning application. So that helps address some of those isolated spots. And we're, we're trying to infuse in the plans more tools like that, density bonus opportunities, so they don't have to come in and just ask for a land use amendment as the only path to increasing their density. But there are other tools to to get there. But yes, I think if we could, big picture, have more proactive, we would over time reduce the number. But it's a huge county and cities. And so I don't know that we would be able to solve them all. Yeah.
All right. Are there any other questions, comments from the planning commissioners? I did have two quick ones.
Sure.
Comprehensive plan amendment discussion with Keystone Odessa Community Representatives. How did that go? What was?
That, that was good. The, based on some of the plan amendment activity from last month, some of those same folks who were here wanted to ask some questions about some of the other pending applications that are in Keystone, how they would interact with things like the changes in the surface water protection map. The board had recently also approved the plan amendment on Van Dyke and Sun Coast Parkway, where they asked to expand the urban service area and the future land use change there. So they had questions related to that. So it was more us providing information.
Okay. And my other one is the Tampa Flu update, meeting with PC and City Planning Legal. What, what was that about? Is that, is there a motion forward? I thought they had kicked that one down the road while they're.
Well, they have kicked it down the road to a hearing on February 17th. But they gave us a number of directions. They wanted us to revisit certain policies, and then they asked us to look at the issue of Senate Bill 180. And that was largely the discussion on November 5th was around sort of our, our look at the policies. And we've sort of grouped them into things that are very clearly fine and not more restrictive or burdensome, those that very clearly we read them and say, oh, this could be, is restrictive or burdensome. But then there were some that were sort of in a gray area, and we wanted legal's take on those.
All right. Commissioner Bowden?
Yeah. Quick question. Not the Gandy tour, but any key takeaways, opportunities?
So I think it was a good opportunity for us to understand some of the concerns that they have and whether or not the comprehensive plan is necessarily the right tool to address some of the concerns. Some of the concerns had to do with things like the design of the new development, which might be better addressed in the land development code. Some of their concerns had to do with Live Local Act and some of the approvals that are being allowed to happen administratively. We're not in control of those. But then some of them had to do with comprehensive plan amendments. They showed us areas that had seen a lot of flooding in the two storms last year. And so they emphasized some of their concerns around the coastal high hazard area and the importance for, of those policies. But we also talked about things like the new, new standards of building and how that could also address it, because you can see some of the structures being built to a higher elevation. Those are the things that come quickly to mind. Yeah, sure.
All right. Any other questions, comments for our executive director? Not seeing any. We will thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And move on to other business, chairs' business. Actually, do have some business I'd like to bring up, and it's kind of for you, Ms. Zornita. I'm going to get, I'm going to get to the tip of the spear here going into the midterm year next year. I'd like to get an update, maybe at our next meeting, on how the urban service growth area studies is going. I, I'm of a mind to turn my vice chair loose and have him run at the idea that he had originally brought up when we were looking at the Y-Mama area, which at that time I didn't quite agree with. He was talking about, well, why do we even have this boundary altogether? And at that time, the Board of County Commissioners had asked Planning Commission staff to bring forward something that allowed them to expand it that made sense in that area. That was quick. We needed a quick turnaround. In looking at these growth areas and thinking over it for a while, because I've had some time to think now and relax, which is probably not good, the county commission didn't ask us to necessarily pick an area and say, this is where growth should go. We're kind of studying two different areas to see if growth should go there. I think this is the proper time to ask Commissioner Lauk's question, why do we even have an urban service boundary? And the reason I say that is not to remove the urban service boundary necessarily, but I think this is an opportunity for Planning Commission staff and yourself to prove once and for all whether or not we actually do need an urban service boundary. And I realize that when Mr. Gormley and Ms. Wise and all the people down in the county departments hear the conversation we're having here right now, eyes are going to go this big and heads are going to explode and people are going to go crazy. But again, what I'm not saying here is that we absolutely need to remove it. What I'm saying is, while we're studying, why aren't we studying all the options? Why are we only studying Little Manatee and I-4? Why not, for instance, are we studying, you know, and I'm going to be crazy here, why aren't we studying expanding it in Keystone? We've seen, the reason I say this, we've seen little expansions in those areas. We've seen little expansions at the edge of where we expanded it to. It seems like this urban service boundary keeps growing and growing and growing and growing. So it seems like we should be looking at areas more than Little Manatee and I-4. And then I also have some questions, too, when we talk about this, when you bring up the update. In the Little Manatee area specifically, I've been going in and, because I, GIS I do for fun, so I've been downloading maps and playing with them, and I'll probably bring some maps next month when we talk about this, too. But the northern area of Little Manatee is directly in the coastal high hazard. So I don't understand why the Little Manatee area doesn't extend to the coast on the bottom. Was the reason because of the coastal high hazard area, or did we just stop it where we stopped it, based on what exactly?
So a couple of things. One, when the board asked us about areas for expansion, we identified, we did a study identifying those areas that made sense to expand. That was based on existing development patterns, opportunities for vacant and developable lands, where there were environmental lands and natural resources that needed to be avoided. So an area like Keystone, just to build on that example, has a good bit of environmental land, a number of lakes, and at the time, wellhead areas.
Absolutely.
That were, so it made it less attractive, as well as it is often, it's already sort of cut up into a lot of large lot residential subdivisions. Whereas the Little Manatee South area has some larger land, vacant and developable land opportunities or agricultural land opportunities. Similarly, the I-4 corridor. Now, the study areas that we identified at that time were a first cut at that, based on factors like where is the coastal high hazard area? What do the existing community plans say? What, those were two factors in the Little Manatee South area in particular. But our consultant team has been refining those study areas. And in the Little Manatee South area, actually is recommending some expansions to look, to look at a little bit broader view of that. And similarly, similarly, they're looking at the I-4 corridor, and our initial study area, for example, went all the way to Plant City. Plant City has, in their vision map, a portion of that already as part of their broader, like, annexation plan. We don't need to be having overlapping planning in that area. We, we need to coordinate that. And so we're meeting with Plant City to discuss, you know, what is the best approach in that area that overlaps. So the study areas are getting refined by the consultant teams. I'm absolutely happy to provide an update. We don't know whether or not the end result of this work will be that they recommend expanding the urban service area or doing something different to accommodate growth in those areas. It may be that there is another tool or a policy approach that, that fits the way those areas need to accommodate growth better than just being in the urban service area. So we don't know. But it was not requested of us. That's what the board asked us to do. They asked us to bring the two areas in and then to study these two areas. Certainly, we could, as part of this, present a question back to the board about evaluating.
No, 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 that's not. And let me be clear, because you, you're defending, and that's okay. I'm not, I'm not attacking the two areas. I think the two areas should be, you need to move forward with that.
Right.
As you were moving forward with them. I'm not saying those were the wrong areas, and instead, we need to look at it. I'm saying, keep moving forward with those, but we need to add more options. You've taken a very wise approach, a conservative approach, to handle what we could handle, because at that time, things were moving quickly. Board of County Commissioners was at the dais. They were saying, do this, do that. Things were moving quickly. Now we have a little bit of room to breathe. The call of our agency is to, again, make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. So I'm not asking for you to go back. If this goes forward, I'm willing to hand the If this goes forward, I'm willing to hand the gavel to Commissioner Lauk and direct you to have our staff investigate removing the urban service boundary as part of this process. So that would be a directive coming from our board based on a vote and motion, right? So I'm not asking you to go back and talk to the Board of County Commissioners. What I'm talking about, and again, I'm not demonizing Little Manatee. I'm not demonizing the I-4 selection. What I'm saying is we should be looking, now that we're studying, we should be looking broader, is what I'm saying. And we should be taking into things like what Commissioner Lauk said. What is, why do we even, why is one of the options not looking? I want to know what happens when we move the urban service boundary. And I realize that that's gonna cause a lot of contention and, you know, county services is gonna have to do a lot of work and people are gonna have to put their heads on it, put their thinking caps on and think about things. But I think it's a valid question. And maybe at the end of it, we prove Commissioner Lauk wrong and he'll finally be quiet, right? Maybe it'll be, we absolutely need an urban service boundary. Absolutely need to keep playing this game that hasn't worked for 30 years of directing growth where we think it's gonna go. That could be the solution. I don't know. All I'm saying is while we're studying it, we're no longer in this environment of the county commissioner saying, do this and do that. We're now doing a study to give them a recommendation. So I want to see more of the study than just these two specific areas. And I'm just having a conversation. This is something, like I said, I'd make a motion and make sure that the whole board was on it. And you know me, I'm a Democratic person. If nobody wants to do that and I get outvoted, I get outvoted. That's just what it is. I'm just kind of bringing this talking point up and discussing it right now because I feel that in this study is the place that these questions need to be asked. So my first thought is that I'd like to, you know, and I'm telling you this so that when we come back next time and talk about it, I'm sure you're gonna talk to me and pick my brain about this. I know how it goes. So removing the urban service boundary is something that I'd like to look at. And then there's another map that's urban service areas that are prepared by the Federal Highway Administration and FDOT. That map takes in a couple more areas than our, I've overlaid the two boundaries. And when you look at them, it brings into certain areas that we're not really looking at in our urban service boundaries. I was talking to some people at FDOT and they were telling me the reason they have that is because it directs federal dollars there. So I'm thinking, wouldn't it make sense if we aligned our urban service boundary to take in those sort of FDOT areas that they're looking at as urban service areas already? You know what I mean? I'm thinking there should be some sort of alignment. So I'd like to think about looking at that map too because that map's broader. It looks at the region as a region, right? It looks at Pinellas, it looks at Pasco, it looks at Manatee. And FDOT is aligning where they're putting money in their design dollars. So it would make sense, it would behoove us if we're looking at, you know, urban development to kind of align ourselves with where the money and where the FDOT and the state and the federal level even. They're all in alignment. And then you get to Hillsborough County and there's this wonky like urban service map that doesn't line up with it. So I'm thinking radical, on the radical end, we want to look at removing the urban service boundary. What are the impacts? Everybody go crazy. I know, I can hear the county attorney radio. I know, we're gonna have to rewrite the, you know, land development code and make changes, but that's not our purview. That's what the elected officials are elected to do. So if that's our recommendation, you know, there's still gonna be protections for Keystone. It's just gonna be written into the land development code, whatever those changes become. You know, and that's, again, that's not our purview. Our purview is to look at all things and then try and put it before the elected so they have a broad spectrum to choose from. Right now, we're channeling them into these two areas. And like you just said, we're learning that these two areas are changing because what we originally thought isn't what we thought. So I'd like to see us, as an agency, be able to put something a bit broader in front of the electives for them to have a full discussion. And then they're gonna go at each other, but again, that's not our business. You know what I mean? They're gonna make the final decision, they're gonna do what they have to do. So let's not worry about all these things that are beyond our purview. You know what I mean? So I just wanted to sort of bring that up and set that up for next month if you could come back.
Yeah, I think definitely by next month, we will, we can have an update on the two studies and those areas. I'm not sure that in 30 days, we'll have fully been able to flesh out the impacts of...
No, 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 that's later. Yeah, yeah. The conversation comes first and then if I, I'll make a motion and we'll take a vote and it might not even happen.
Just wanna make sure I'm clear.
You know what I mean? They might say, Chair Joseph, you're crazy. We're not, that's a can of worms we don't want to get into. The board might feel that it's not appropriate and that's completely fine, you know what I mean? So at that point, then you'll have to struggle and figure out how you're gonna fit it in and the timing of all that. Because I would assume if we take action and direct you to do something, you kind of have to do it.
Yes, oh, yes, yes. It just would be something staff would be doing because that's not part of the consultant's scope of work.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lauk?
I will take the radical comment with a grin that it was intended with. But I'll note for our new commissioners, when we talk about the urban service boundary, jurisdictions is widely politically diverse as Houston and Los Angeles do not have them. So it's not that radical of a thought or an idea when you see successful cities who've been able to plan and zone without having that.
Any other comments on my chairs business comments? And I hit everybody from left field, Commissioner Jameson?
Well, I would agree. And I'd also, it would make sense that if we would align with FDOT on a regional level of what they're looking at funding, if we're gonna have one, it would be in more alignment as a region rather than just individually.
Yeah, I guess too, my thinking, because I'm on the TPO and I know we're doing this regional merger, the TPO. When I looked at the maps, I found it shocking. Pinellas is completely in there, like they're everywhere in Pinellas. There is no urban service boundary in Pinellas. Like they're just developing everywhere. And I was like, if we merge as a region, if I was at FDOT, why wouldn't I want to focus more money where there's more developable urban area like in Pinellas? So I was just thinking like, we need to bone up on our stuff and get ourselves together, like I said, so. And again, we're not the final decision makers. The electeds are gonna have to hash this out. You know, there's, if we get rid of, were to get rid of urban service, there's, you know, areas of the land development code that are gonna have to change, you know. So it's a very big can of worms that I'm bringing up here. I do realize that, okay? But put it on me, Ms. Ornita. Tell them Chair Joseph said it and he's the wild man who's got this thing going on. And I commend the two areas that you started out with. Again, I'm not, I have no issue with those. I think it was a very considered and, you know, taking a small bite, something we can handle, something everybody can deal with. But, you know, it's a midterm year next year, so like I said, I'm taking the tip of the spear. Let's go crazy, so we'll see, we'll see. All right, Commissioner Orton?
I just have a question. When you expand the urban service area, is the county responsible for putting it, all the infrastructure in immediately? Or is there a timeframe? Because I do know that, like for the schools, we didn't extend to the urban service area. So we didn't get roads in in time and one of our schools was denied. So if we're expanding urban service area, how soon is the county responsible for getting that infrastructure in the ground?
There's not, in the plan today, there's not a specific timeframe. But yes, the expectation is that in the urban service area, folks would be able to connect to central water and sewer and have urban levels of service. That being said, there are definitely areas within the urban service area that don't have that. There are parts of Palm River, Gibsonton, Ruskin, even the university area that still have development on septic tanks. The county is now going in and trying to extend the services and be proactive in those areas. They often have the initial line extensions for water and sewer, road improvements to some degree borne by the developer. And then the developer gets paid back as other development comes online and taps into those services. So, but I think that is, that's how the urban service area, as I understand it, started as a concept, was really about where the county could provide infrastructure service. And over time, it sort of morphed into a growth controlling boundary. And the distinction and preservation of the rural areas became a bigger thing to communities like Keystone and Lutes. But initially, when it was created, it was about where logically can the county provide services? And it was really a service planning tool.
That's a very good question, Commissioner Orton. I thank you for asking it because that's, questions like those are the reason why I'm lobbing this grenade. Because those conversations need to be had in the light of the sunshine. And we as a county need to understand where our money has been going and why certain areas don't have infrastructure and why things aren't being kept up with. And nobody's been able to want to stand up and have those conversations. And something like removing the urban service boundary forces those conversations. So that is really my aim. Again, I don't know whether it's gonna happen or not, but as a community, we need to have these discussions, right? Frankly and on the record. So thank, that was a very excellent question. And I hope more come as this thing moves forward. Are there any other comments from the commissioners on my, Commissioner Kugler?
Yes, to your point about comparison of Pinellas and Hillsborough on this issue, no, no urban service areas in Pinellas. Did they prioritize, rather than spending time on the urban service area, did they devote their time to setting aside green spaces primarily? Because I do know over there, they have some major, you know, Whedon Island, you name it. There's a park in the, very close to St. Pete, there's a big preserve as well. And the Keystone Preserve up north, which is, goes into Pinellas County, Tarpon Lake and all that. Do you think that the, that may have been the trick to preserve that first and then let the urban, at least those are protected and untouchable? So if we know those areas ahead in Hillsborough, we can also put them in place, they're protected and then the, and let the boundaries disappear is a suggestion I think you're going at.
Correct, yeah. And also, the community, the community plan areas was another one I thought. Those community plans protect little pockets in little areas. So once you have those protections written in very well, it seems to me like you just said, why not just let, you know, the others go? But again, it takes the proper protections in place. And we need to have the conversations about whether or not those protections are in place, why they're not in place, can they be put in place? You know what I mean? So I'd just like to kind of have those conversations.
Yeah, I think that's a really interesting point because when the urban service area was started in the early 90s, and Sean might know when the ELAP program started, but, okay, no, or maybe not. But, okay, okay. My guess is that some of that started around the same time. And now, because of the success of the ELAP program, we have a good bit of those environmental assets now preserved that may not have been in the early 90s when this concept was introduced in the plan. A lot's changed since then. We didn't have community plans, to your point, in the early 90s. So there is a lot that has evolved. I will just say that Pinellas County is kind of a hard example to compare to. They have 26 local government, or 24, I'm gonna say. And so the number of individual municipalities and their control over those areas. The Hillsborough County is rather unique in the large percentage of land that is in the unincorporated area. And that we don't have a city of Brandon or a city of Ruskin, you know, making some of those decisions. That's why we ended up in the community planning forum. At any rate, a lot of these concepts over, like correlate, yeah.
Commissioner Lauk? We turned it off. Commissioner Orton?
And I just wanted to go with what Melissa said. And the only reason I knew there are 24 is because I just looked it up. So there are 24 municipalities in Pinellas County. Therefore, you have city government paying for that infrastructure and Pinellas County is not. Hillsborough County only has three municipalities and they have to pay for everything. And that extends out our borders or a lot further. Even Polk County has 17 municipalities. So we are such a different county and that's a lot of cost placed on Hillsborough County, property taxes and everything else to pay for that infrastructure.
Ms. College?
Sean College Planning Commission Staff. I just looked it up really quick. ELAP started in 1987.
Okay, all right. Any other thoughts on this? Commissioner Lauk?
I think that's a great point about Pinellas County. It's one of the smallest counties in the state of Florida and historically the most densely populated with lots of municipalities. If we look at areas like Phoenix and there are some other counties. I think Orange County, for example, is predominantly county. And I think maybe of Apopka and maybe one other municipality that we could use as a baseline as we study this. I think there are examples out there that are more comparable to Hillsborough County that we could employ.
See the conversations we had. Remember, Ms. Ornita, when they come at you, you just tell them it was me. I'm fine with it. I don't, you know, I'm fine with it. That's what I'm, I'm here to be the bad guy. You see, I'm in all black, so I'm, you know, I'm Johnny Cash from Air Force. Yes, Commissioner Lauk?
They're gonna call you a radical.
They've called me worse, so it's all good. But these are the conversations and the questions that I think that this will inspire and that's why I'm so adamant about it. Again, I don't know which way it's gonna fall, if it will even go forward, but I think it's imperative as a county, we have these conversations. State's talking about lifting property taxes. I mean, that's gonna get baked into all this. These are conversations we need to take very seriously as we go forward here. So that's the only reason why I bring it up. And thank you for bringing that information forward next month. Then I'll look forward to hearing it. And I will shut my mouth now with the chairs business. That was it, so there is no old business that I know of. We'll move on to new business. And it looks like Ms. Ornita has...
We do. We have your 2026 planning commission meeting schedule. Should be at your seats. All of the meetings are currently planned for the second Monday of the month. I will point out that again, in November, Veterans Day falls midweek. So it doesn't conflict with this meeting. But if, having a holiday, it'll be Wednesday next year, if that poses a problem with attendance at the meeting, it'd be good to know that early so that we can reschedule that because we do need to work with HTV and others on making sure we don't have a conflict. The only other thing that I would highlight is that meeting on January 26th that hopefully will have confirmed soon with the Plant City Commission. We thought that was a good opportunity for you all to jointly discuss the outcomes of the visioning survey and the types of issues that you all would like to see tackled in the update. So we'll probably look to do something similar with Temple Terrace after their visioning process concludes next year. And the only other thing is that once we have the Tampa Planning Commissioner appointed, which now should be November 20th, I will be doing a poll for a retreat for you all, a time for you all to talk about different issues and things not in this formal meeting setting. Probably that will be after the first of the year, given the timing with the holidays. So that would be the only thing that I anticipate being added to this calendar.
All right. Any questions on that from anyone, any comments? No, they're not even interested.
And if we can get, if we can at least get consensus that this is the agreed upon schedule, then we can start planning things based on it.
I think everybody here seems to be okay with it, but we do have quite a few people missing, so you might want to run it by them. All right, and next up, we have committee reports. Everybody have any committee reports? I have one. I was, we had a TPO meeting this morning, well, I guess before the TPO meeting this morning. Couple weeks ago, we were over in Orlando as a TPO board for a group meeting. It was a joint meeting between TPO board members, Pinellas TPO board members and Pasco County TPO board members, basically the three regions that are involved in the merger. We went over to Orlando to listen to them. They've done something similar and merged their TPO over there. So we got some best practices and some deeper understanding of how they were able to work together. At a personal level, I found it very inspirational. I thought there was a lot of good information passed back and forth. There was still a little trepidation on the part of some of our TPO board members, but we're still moving forward. As Ms. Ornita said, this Friday, we'll be doing another workshop out in Clearwater to, again, try and move this thing forward a little bit more as the state would like us to. But that was a good field trip out there and it can happen. It's working currently in Florida, so it's not unheard of to merge entities so that we can sort of funnel money down to our region of the state. That was a good meeting. And then this morning, we had our regular TPO board meeting. Action items included some very small things. We took action on the FDOT FTE tentative work program. We sent a letter... We took action on the FDOT-FTE tentative work program, we sent a letter of comment to the secretary, highlighting some of the projects that we thought that were good, that they were working with us on, and then, you know, doing a mea culpa and acknowledging some of the things that they were cutting back on, and giving them some information on a couple of projects that we would like to see them focus on going forward. That got approved unanimously, and the Unified Planning Work Program also got approved unanimously this morning at the TPO board meeting. And we got status reports on the Hart Transit Development Plan for 2026, 2035, a lot of good things going on at Hart. We've had to lose some routes, but there's a lot of forward movement on the heavy maintenance facility, which is a great thing. They're gonna be adding hundreds of new LNG buses by the time they get that thing done and going, which is an amazing thing, some updates on route time improvements that are getting people where they need to go on time and better, so Hart's doing a good job turning things around. We had a presentation on intersection collision avoidance safety programs. It's a program that's going on in District 1, where basically, they've got a sensor that can sort of forecast whether or not someone's gonna run a red light, and based on that forecasting, it'll delay the perpendicular lanes turning green for just a couple seconds so that the red light driver can clear this intersection instead of T-boning someone because the perpendicular light goes green. Again, that's in FDOT Region 1, I forget what it's called, Region 1, but the secretary for our regions also looking at bringing that in, they're doing the final studies and collecting data on it now, and from what Secretary Hall said, it's just a matter of them crossing Ts and dotting Is, and then they're gonna be trying to move that into our region to get that on our state road lights and things like that. There was a lot of positive agreement amongst all the electeds who were there, City of Tampa, Plant City, Temple Terrace, county officials, all thought it was a great idea, and hopefully it'll be something we work towards here as a region, getting those lights and collisions down at the intersection. And that was about it for the TPO board meeting this morning, and that's about it for me for the TPO. Are there any other committee reports from anyone? Not seeing any at this time, then that is the end of this meeting. We are set to start up at 5:30, are we sticking with that for our public hearing for the City of Tampa? Exciting. So, we will see everybody back here at 5:30, and at 4:48 PM, this regular meeting is adjourned.